Definitely better than me, so I'm sure Tim can.
You guys all set to get started? You're recording?
I think we're missing Wes.
Yeah, Wes hasn't signed on yet.
Never mind. I did start recording though, so everything's all set for you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Keaton.
Yeah, no problem.
How you doing, Tim?
Doing good. Keeping busy.
I expect as much, yeah.
There's a lot going on in the village.
Well, it doesn't make for a boring day then, so.
That's true. I'd rather be busy than bored, so to speak.
Yeah, I hear ya. We're just waiting on Wes then?
Yeah, I think that's... I'm just gonna look at the list right now.
Tim, do you have me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, fine. Thank you. I'll unmute. I'll unmute.
Sounds good. Yeah, looks like we have everybody but Wes.
And Ron is not gonna be here?
Ron is not gonna be here. He said he was unable to attend. And I hadn't heard from Ellie. There he is. Wes is coming in right now.
Good evening.
There we go. Yep.
Sorry, took a lot to get hooked up.
That's okay. I think we have everybody online now, so we should be good to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, well, nice to see everyone tonight.
Hi, Wes.
Hi, guys. How's everyone?
Still here, Wes.
Fine. Thanks.
Still here.
Doing good, Wes.
Oh, boy. Well, I guess everybody, we've got a couple more attachments today, which I guess Chip hasn't had a chance to look at the one from... Look up the woman's name. Elizabeth Holmes?
I've looked at it. So, you know, they've made a request. You know, all I said in the email forwarding those along is I would give you guys my legal opinion on some of those issues afterwards, but on the issue of whether or not you want to allow... They've requested the opportunity, because Holmes has requested the opportunity on behalf of her clients, and as I indicated both to her and to the planning board members, that's that's a purely discretionary issue for you. You know, the planning board is not is not required to hold public hearings on these types of applications, but a public hearing was held on this and it was conducted. It's really up to the board as to whether or not they feel it would be helpful, useful to you to hear from the attorney.
Okay. How does the board feel about giving her five minutes to go over the highlights of her letter?
Although, before you answer that, just, I would say, I think we... Well, again, it's really up to you when you want to do that. I don't know that... I mean, the applicant was gonna make a presentation as well, and I think actually that should probably come first.
Right, okay. Yeah, just sometime during tonight's meeting.
In my opinion, I think we should listen to her because if we don't, we're, you know, we're gonna be accused of something, so I think we should at least listen.
I agree. Kevin, I agree.
Okay. Does five minutes sound fair? Give her five minutes of time to highlight to her letter?
It's fine with me, just as long as, you know, we can... She has opportunity to speak.
Okay.
I don't know how anyone else feels about it, but that's what I feel.
Are we talking just the attorney for Elizabeth Holmes, just the attorney?
Correct. That would be my choice.
Well, I think that would be my choice as well. I mean, she can define essentially the arguments, I think, that, you know, are pertinent and that I'm sure the client, her clientele are actually making, so.
Okay.
I mean, in my opinion, I would like her to focus, though, on any issues that are related to site plan and architectural review. You know, I mean, at this point, I think that's our task and we should stick to it and let Chip and the lawyers deal with any of the legal issues through the village.
Okay.
My question is, is this simply a letter from an attorney? Or does this relate to something else?
Oh, it's the... So Kate, you may not have had a chance to take a look at it.
I did read it. I did read it.
Well, I think they're purports to be on behalf of the petitioners in the litigation, so.
So these are the same group?
Well, the petitioners in the litigation is an LLC by the name of Williamsville Residents Opposed to Block their Home Redevelopment. I don't know who the members of that organization are. There are also a number of individual petitioners identified in the petition. When Ms. Holmes speaks, I think she can identify who she's speaking on behalf of at that time. All I know is what's in the letter and what's in the petition.
Could I ask a question, Chip? This engineering study, your opinion about that? Was that something that we weren't aware of that's gonna affect those homes below there? Is that something new, or has that already been addressed, in your opinion?
I don't have an opinion on that. I think we'll let the applicant express whether they have an opinion on it, but what I would suggest is we send it over to the village engineer to have them take a look at it.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that.
Okay. Chip, is there anything on this lawsuit that we should know about?
I'd be happy to brief the board on that in an executive session, if you would like to do that. But I don't want to do that in public. That's protected by attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
Although, I... Let me... I'm more than happy to give the following update. The petition was filed. The original return date was August 5th, which is Wednesday. The parties reached an agreement that to adjourn that date to see what's happens at this meeting and/or subsequent meetings, so that we know whether or not there's any, you know, what happens, and they may wish to amend their petition or whatever. But so where we are right now in the litigation is we're adjourned to October 7th with court.
Okay. Okay. And I think you all... Everyone also saw the petitioner is not looking for a motion tonight on this?
The applicant is not looking for a vote this evening. So I'll let the applicant speak for themselves on that, but I do believe that was, you know, they would prefer to have a full board.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that.
Can I ask who's missing tonight?
Ron. Ron and Ellie wasn't able... Well, I never heard from Ellie. Ron said he couldn't.
Ellie's an alternate and Amy's here. We have a full board. The others still are waiting for her.
No, we don't. We have six people.
Because Elizabeth has been...
Yeah. Elizabeth's recused. So really, Amy's taking the place of Ron tonight.
Okay. So our next meeting would be the day after Labor Day? Is that correct?
That's how it's scheduled, yeah, right now. Yeah, unless you wanted to... Yeah, because Labor Day is the Monday. So if you want to, we could go for the end of August if we didn't like that date, but that's what it's scheduled as right now.
Okay. It seems like maybe we ought to float a couple of dates to make sure we have seven.
Okay. I can send an email out tomorrow and see what everybody's pleasure is, so.
Okay. So if we tentatively shot for the last Monday of August or the day after Labor Day, which is a Tuesday? Does that sound...
Tuesday. I'll pull up the calendar.
Anybody now know of any concerns with those dates?
The Tuesday after Labor Day, I believe, is the 8th?
Yes, Tuesday after Labor Day is the 8th.
I can be there. I will be there.
If we did August, it would be the 31st.
I would prefer the September date. The 31st might be tough with people going away.
Correct.
You know, before this part of school.
Okay.
So I'll send an email out tomorrow, just making sure we can get everybody to confirm for the 8th. It sounds like we have a majority who's ready for the 8th, which would be the Tuesday, day after Labor Day.
Okay.
And Wes, can I ask you a question procedurally tonight? Our discussions will center around basically what's on the agenda or not?
What do you mean, not on the agenda?
Well, I mean, basically, we will go to a vote tonight if we are...
No, we are not going to vote tonight.
That was my question.
We're gonna wait till we have seven numbers.
So we listen and discuss tonight, is that correct?
Right, because they have made some changes this last month and...
That's correct. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Everyone get a chance to look at the packet supplied by the applicant?
Yep.
And thanks again, Amy, for dropping that off.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Glad everyone found them.
Gotta spread the prints out in the backyard. They're really big.
Yeah.
At least I can read them, so. Anyone else have any questions tonight? I mean, we can kind of wait for the applicant to describe the changes he's made since last month, or anything else anyone would like to bring up, or?
To this packet that we received?
To the packet we received, yes.
Well, I had some issues with the headlight study. I would like the applicant to address in their presentation the source of the information. And I feel that the placement of the car... I felt this would work better as a 3D graphic because cars move into the street and obviously you don't, depending on which way you're turning, you're gonna go past a drive lane in the one direction, which would make the car closer to the houses across the street as well as angle then into other properties other than 98 Evans, as well as I went just simply out to my street out front and, you know, took a yardstick and measured how high up that lights are. And I'm not finding this car average of 24 to be something that is current, at least in the average of cars that are on my street right now. So, you know, simply taking my little trace paper and putting it over the packet that was given and moving the car in the direction of travel, you know, I have some major concerns for 98 Evans as well as and the neighboring properties that are not shown on here. I mean, I'm getting a truck will put lights with, if anybody drives with their high beams are, which we know sometimes trucks do, into the second floor. If turning left out of that driveway across the drive lanes to get into one. So, I mean, I think that a 3D visual would be much more appropriate than this 2D visual to understand the implications. And I think that I've stressed many, many times that this is one of my grave concerns for this project is how it impacts the neighbors on Evans with the driveway alignments and headlights. This was also, you know, one of my very big concerns for the Natali development. So, you know, it's like we have these larger developments coming into the village. I think we need to be very protective of the existing residents and the impact that has had on them. So that was one of my concerns. So I would like the source of the information and, you know, I would like to see, you know, we didn't see the max on here. We saw the average height of the headlights. So what does... I mean, I drew the max on here. I know what's gonna happen. And even the max, you know, is in the first floor and going up to the second floor. So that's a concern of mine with the additional information that was, that we've never seen before that was submitted this evening.
Okay, yeah, this sketchy, it looks like the worst-case scenario or best-case scenario, depending on which way you want to look at it.
No, it's the average. No, it's the average. What they're depicting is the average is not the maximum situation.
Right, but I mean, where the car is situated in the driveway there.
Well, that's sitting there. Right, and the car starts to move, so I don't consider that to be the worst-case scenario.
Well, I agree. I'm just saying, this is, they kind of picked and choose where they took this. This is a nice shot, Amy, with the headlights aiming down into the ground.
This diagram, if you put a car driving at a slope that they depict on Evans, the car wouldn't nick over the hump. It would sit there teetering on either side. So it is simply a graphic. But I think that it's definitely sways towards the applicant's argument, so.
I agree. So we'll get them to clarify that and do a little further study on that.
Thank you.
I also have a question, a legal question for Chip. Chip, what's the definition, the difference between a waiver and a variance? Is there one? Is that just thematic?
Yes.
Okay, could you define that for us?
You know, the planning board has the authority under our zoning code to waive certain requirements. And there are certain things you, without the necessity of the applicant having to obtain a variance from the zoning board of appeals. They're mostly dimensional in nature, which normally would be an area variance. But essentially, under our zoning code, the planning board can waive some, but not all, dimensional requirements, but not by more than 50%.
Right.
And upon certain showing. So, for instance, you can't get a... The planning board does not have the authority to grant a variance, I'm sorry, a waiver with respect to amount of parking that is required. So that's why they had to go to the ZBA, when they wanted to provide less than the code provides for parking, and they went to the ZBA and the ZBA granted them that variance. You cannot grant a waiver with respect to maximum height. But the things that they are seeking a waiver for, the board does have the authority to grant those waivers within those.
So we're not being arbitrary, arbitrary or capricious with that, correct?
Well, assuming you're... You have the authority to grant it.
Okay, that's what I meant. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone have anything else? Would we want to go into executive session now, or do we need to wait till the meeting officially opens, or what?
I feel like we shouldn't be making our decisions based on a lawsuit. That's just how I feel.
I will just say, with Keaton stepping away, I don't know if I'm capable of doing the breakout room portion, so we can maybe do it later, if it gets available again.
I don't... And I don't... I mean, again, I'm happy to update the board beyond what I've done. But I don't see any pressing reasons, since there's not gonna be a vote tonight, that that necessarily has to happen tonight.
Okay.
And I agree, generally with what Kate said. I mean, I don't think that regardless of what's going on in the litigation, your role here is to make your decision based on the zoning code, regardless of whether there's a lawsuit.
Okay.
I was gonna say, it may come up that we need to do it before this, but if we wanted to for that September meeting, if we wanted to maybe sign on early on a separate login, we could do executive session before the meeting next time. However that works out, we can figure that out later, but just as an option.
All right.
Can I just ask a question? Is it possible for us to meet in person, like in the fire hall, and be 20 feet apart at tables or anything? Because I think we get more done if we're... I don't know, you know, I don't know what the village rules are on this, but if we were in the fire hall at separate tables, wouldn't that work better for us?
We... So I can't... I'm not gonna try to answer that question, but practical, whether you get more done or not. But yes, you can meet. We're not required to meet remotely. We are authorized to meet remotely. We may not be authorized to meet remotely in September. That's gonna depend on what the governor does, his executive orders. But it is permissible at this point to have a, and has been all along, to have a public meeting in person as long as we follow all the appropriate safety protocols, the, you know, the difficulty with a project like this, which does attract some attention, is the ability to... Because any meeting we have, now, we can have a meeting in executive session that's just us, but an executive session is called out of a regular meeting. And the regular meeting, if we're gonna have it in person...
I was just thinking of us as a group. I wasn't planning on, you know, public session, but I guess this is what we have to do.
I mean, I could always meet with the board, and we can meet face to... I mean, an attorney-client privileged meeting is exempt from the open meetings law. As drawing the fine distinction here with an executive session, which is a private meeting that's called out of a regular meeting.
Anybody else have any thoughts on it? Is everyone good like this, or?
I understand.
We may have no choice come September. I have no idea what what... The governor has unfortunately tended to wait to the last minute to extend his executive orders when he extends them, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I guess we'll be this way for a while.
We'll see.
Things change weekly. No, anything else? It's about 7:25. Did you get a chance to look at the elevations of the North Building?
Yeah.
Personally, I still don't care for the three stories and a couple of units in the middle of the building.
I agree with Wes on that point.
As a side note, you probably all know that Drexel Hill Apartments just up the street has been sold. So just thinking down the road, what happens at this project, we gotta think about if something might happen down the street.
You would think that if this is this contentious with the neighborhood, that the village board, who has been the same board that they have been for over a year now, would look at this seriously because of that cell, or even maybe because of this project, and take that into consideration when looking at the MMU district and see, does it still hold the flow test? It passed all of its rigors when it was adopted, but does it still hold its flow test? And if it doesn't with the neighborhood, which it seems like it doesn't, maybe the village board should reconsider the MMU zoning for this area and do something about it. That's my comment.
I agree. And I'm not saying anything's happening at Drexel Hill. I just know it has new owners and they've... The little blurb I saw, they're gonna put a lot of money into it, so.
The sister company of who bought its name is total wrecking, so with a W. So take that however you may.
Okay. So there's a lot of room from those buildings out to Evans, so. 50-year-old dated buildings.
I can think they could put 40 townhouses over here. They could put 40 there. Very beautiful looking ones. Very beautiful looking ones.
Well, it's about 7:28. Can we call the meeting order now?
Sure.
Sure, okay. Well, to start off, welcome to the Village of Williamsville Planning Board meeting for Monday, August 3rd, 2020. Does... I guess, Deb, if you could take a roll call vote or a roll call attendance?
Okay. Mr. Razon?
Here.
Mr. Trugilio is absent. Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Pacer?
Here.
Ms. Alexander?
Here.
Ms. Waterman Kulpah?
Here.
Mr. Greco?
Here.
Justy Piazza? Justy Piazza?
Hazel, you're on mute.
And Mr. Masters?
Here.
Hazel, just give a thumbs up.
Well done, Kevin.
I guess our last meeting was Monday, May 18th, 2020? Is that someone right? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 18th, 2020 Planning Board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions on the minutes?
I think the agenda says that we're approving the January meeting. So I just need a moment to refresh myself on these, or I can just... Either way.
It may save January. That may have been my mistake.
Okay. So you want a minute to... Do you have a copy of them?
I'm looking at them right now.
Okay. Why don't we take a minute and everybody can read through them real quick, make sure we don't have any concerns with them?
If anybody wants to share my screen, I have them off.
Can't share it because they're on my computer at work and don't have it available.
Am I audible now?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Everyone okay with that minute? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Well, we had a motion, we had a second. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I... I'm in favor.
Okay, minutes are approved from the May 18th, 2020 meeting. Is Sean here? Mr. Hopkins?
Yeah, I'm here if everyone can hear me.
Okay, we can hear you. Would you care to make a presentation on your letter from July 28th?
Yeah, Chairman Stone, I would like that opportunity. I think Tim has a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, so just for the record, Sean Hopkins from... just for the record, Sean Hopkins from Hopkins, George and McCarthy, on behalf of the applicant.
Sean, Sean, before we get started, can, can people who are not on mute, mute, we're getting a lot of feedback here. Doug Coppola, you're not muted. Okay.
Are we better now? So, good evening once again. Sean Hopkins of Alphard, Hopkins, George and McCarthy, on behalf of the applicants, People Inc. and Bloker Home. Also with me this evening are Rhonda Frederick and Jocelyn Bose from People Inc., Dan O'Neil from Bloker Homes, and Matt Long, the project architect. Tim, if you could pull up the presentation?
Yep, if you want to start, I'm working on it. Just one second.
So basically, just to recap where we were, obviously, on May 18, during that meeting, you did issue a negative declaration pursuant to the State environmental quality review act, which means now what's in front of you is site plan architectural approval. I do want to note for the record, we are not asking for a decision on either of those petting applications from the board this evening. Two reasons. Number one, given the hard work that's been exerted by everyone in connection with this project, we think a vote should be by a full seven-member board. And secondly, given the gap in time and given that we made an updated site plan submission, we want to present that to you and solicit any additional input that you have. I did hear a couple of comments during the work session and we'll address those as well. So Tim, you can skip right to the next slide. So this project has been reviewed, obviously, over the course of many meetings, going back to nearly a year ago, August 15 of last year, up until May 18. I already referenced the fact that you did issue a negative declaration during your meeting on May 18. The site itself is approximately 5.26 acres in size and importantly, is zoned neighborhood mixed-use district or NMU pursuant to the zoning map of the Village of Williamsville. Next. So the project is currently proposed consists of 95 mixed-income residential units. The median income for those units will range from 50% to 90% of the median income in the Buffalo, Niagara metropolitan statistical area. Seventy-seven of those units would be one bedrooms and 18 would be two bedrooms. Based on the current plan, the estimated cost of this project is approximately $31.5 million, so it represents a large expenditure of capital. Pursuant to Section 11217A6A of the zoning code, it is important to reiterate that multifamily dwellings are expressly permitted in the existing NMU zoning district. Subsequent to us presenting this project last year during the meeting on May 18, we did go to the zoning board of appeals and during a June meeting, it did grant the area variance for the number of parking spaces, specifically allowing 110 parking spaces versus the code requirement. It is important to note that that was subject to one important condition. Basically, the condition states in not so many words that if it turns out there's a complaint that we don't have an adequate number of parking spaces on site, the village had the opportunity to revisit that and require us to provide more parking. We're fine with that. We've previously shown a plan that demonstrates compliance. The reality is, we don't think any additional parking spaces are needed. And as we've indicated quite previously, that would come at the expense of green space along the back portion of the site, along Village Point Lane. But it is important to note that the ZBA did impose a condition that allows that to be revisited if the parking analysis and parking demand turns out to be incorrect, which we don't expect will occur. Next. So we did make an updated site plan submission last week on July 29. Included an updated overall site plan, south and north plan, updated landscaping plan, the headlight study, and that southern driveway alignment plan. And we'll talk about these plans in a little bit more detail in a moment. Next. Obviously, everyone's familiar with the existing site. Just to reiterate, Bloker Home currently consists of an assisted living enhanced living residence with 57 private rooms and suites, and that's simply a photograph along the Evans frontage. Next. This is a slide you've previously seen. It's important in the context of the project and specifically the elevation for the northern building. The site is not, of course, flat. As you head to the north and specifically head towards the northwest, you can see the contour lines. The grade drops relatively quick for western New York, so it drops from about 661 feet where that existing ground sign is, which you can see is labeled, to 647 feet at the northwestern corner of the site. And you can see that grade change really is mostly limited to that corner. It doesn't cross the site north to south in equal contours. Next. So this is just to reiterate where we were last August. Originally, what we proposed was a large addition to the existing building. It would have been three stories, would have occupied a large portion of the Evans frontage. At that point, we had 87 mixed-income apartments with 131 parking spaces. This layout did require three area variances from the zoning board of appeals. Based on the input received from you last summer, we scrapped this plan and obviously went a different direction, more consistent with what we're currently showing, which is three buildings along the Evans frontage per the NMU standards. Next. We've spent a lot of time previously in connection with this project discussing the relationship of the adapted Village of Williamsville Community Plan, the zoning code, and the project. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this again this evening, but just to summarize, the first step was that the village board adopted a community plan or a master plan. That was after a lengthy process, which is summarized in the bullet points. It was adopted on April 12 of 2010 originally. And then an amended version was adopted on May 26 of 2015. So that formed the basis for the zoning code. If you can go to the next slide, Tim. So one of the keys right within the comprehensive plan is the discussion it has about this particular district, the NMU district. And these are literally quotes pulled directly from page 25 of the comprehensive plan. And really, the key to these quotes is basically that residential is appropriate, including what would be noted as high, higher-density residential. Those areas have been denoted as appropriate. We'll show you the zoning map in a second. And that secondly, as a result of that process, there was a whole host of objective standards that were proposed in terms of setbacks, size of buildings, landscaping, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, parking location, et cetera, et cetera. And we'll talk about in a second, the effort we really made over the course of the past year to comply with all those objective standards, with the exception of two aspects that we're asking for waivers. If you could go to the next slide, Tim. So on page 26 of the comprehensive plan, it was adopted by the board of trustees. There's 11 design principles. We've discussed those in great detail as well, and I'll highlight those again in a second. I just want to reiterate, these are pulled directly from the village's community plan that was adopted and then amended in 2015. Next. All right, so after the most recent version of the community plan was adopted on May 26 of 2015, the village board did create the NMU district design standards, which are specified in Section 11217 of the code. There were also some amendments to those sections adopted by the board of trustees later that year on October 26 of 2015. So the NMU district design standards were formed and created and adopted by the board of trustees based on the adopted community plan. It is important to keep in mind the relationship of those important planning documents. Next. So when the village adopted an amended zoning map in connection with those documents, specifically the zoning code, it denoted two areas in the village and only two areas that were appropriate for NMU zoning. One, of course, being in the southwestern portion of the village, shown there on the bottom left. And then a larger area basically occupying a large percentage of the Evans frontage, specifically the east side, heading from a short distance south of SJ, including the project site, all the way to the northern boundary of the village on that side. It's important to note that if you look at this, the zoning classification on the opposite side of the street or the west side of Evans, which consists exclusively of single-family homes, is R3. So the board at that time deemed those zoning classifications to be compatible. And that's how we got to this project being proposed. It is based on the existing zoning classification that's been in place now for several years. Next. So if you look at those NMU design standards, Section 11217A1 sets forth the purpose of the NMU district. And you can see, we think it's consistent with our project. It does specifically state that multi-story buildings are appropriate, inviting ground floors and a mix of uses and architectural styles. It does clearly acknowledge the fact that the NMU areas are close to existing established residential neighborhoods. And then also finally, the third bullet point, that uses within that district are meant to evolve over time, meaning nothing is static. Things change, but as of currently, those NMU standards are exactly the same as they were when most recently amended by the board of trustees in late 2015. Next. That's more of the language pulled directly from Section 11217A2, which is the actual section of the NMU design standards that created the neighborhood mixed-use zoning district. And what's most important on this slide is, a great deal of time was obviously spent by the village, as well as its consultants. And this code, unlike many codes, really does have a lot of very objective and precise standards. The reason why that's relevant is because if you meet those standards, basically, a decision has already been made that, hey, that site or that project is generally appropriate. That does not mean, of course, that it's not subject to input from this board and other committees, but there are very objective standards guiding development within the NMU district, in the NMU design standards. Next. So going back to those 11 standards, we talked about this in great detail during your meetings on August, or May 4th and May 18. I'm not going to go through them one by one, but we think if you look at the project, we meet each of those standards, specifically the design objectives. Some of them, for example, prohibition on cul-de-sacs are not relevant. But we think if you look at those standards and based on the input that we've incorporated from this board over the course of the past year, we think we meet those 11 design objectives. Tim, the next slide is more of the same. You can skip over it or just scroll through it quick. So just to highlight my point in terms of the NMU having very precise design standards. This is just a summary of some of the standards that are contained in the code. Our most current plans that are, of course, fully engineered include engineering plans, drainage plans, grading plans, lighting plans, utility plans, et cetera, et cetera, demonstrate that with two exceptions that we're seeking waivers for, we meet all these criteria in terms of building orientation and setback, building entry, sideways, sidewalks, driveways and access, loading facilities, stormwater and green infrastructure, utilities. Next slide, Tim. Parking standards, landscaping, et cetera. As I indicated, in terms of parking, all of our parking spaces are located behind the building, nothing in front, nothing on the side. And the ZBA did grant an area variance during its meeting on June 17 for the 110 parking spaces we're showing. Next. That's a copy of the most recent landscaping plan that was submitted last week. Really, the only change on this plan compared to what we presented to you on May 18 is, as you recall, we removed some parking spaces along the southeastern corner of the site, replaced those nine parking spaces with 10 parking spaces directly behind a portion of the existing Bloker Home building. And therefore, we were able to infill that area with green space. In terms of the landscaping itself, it's very extensive, 49 trees, five different types, 293 shrubs, seven different types, 312 perennials, four different types, and then 2,642 ground covers. So there really will be extensive landscaping planted in connection with the proposed redevelopment project. Next. We've also talked previously about compliance with the architectural standards. We will show you the updated elevations, but Matt Long and his team have really made an effort, again, over the course of the past year to demonstrate compliance with a wide assortment of standards that are cited on this particular slide. Next. So included with our updated submission last week was an aerial photograph that basically shows the existing building along with the three proposed buildings along the Evans frontage in the context of a 500-foot radius. And really, what that emphasizes is the wide arrangement or wide assortment of uses in terms of intensity in the immediate vicinity of the site. Obviously, we know what's there today. An assisted living facility with 57 private rooms and suites. And in the immediate vicinity, obviously, we have single-family homes, the west, south, and southeast. Directly behind us on Village Point Lane, we have much larger homes. Those are located in the town of Ambers. We have townhouse and multifamily projects on the, to the north, on the east side of Evans, all in properties that are also zoned NMU. And then one of the other predominant uses in that immediate vicinity is the Center Point Office Park, which is also located in the town along SJ. That consists of approximately 350,000 square feet of office. The reason why this slide is important is it really does emphasize that this is not simply a single-family residential neighborhood. We're asking for you to view this in context of the overall area, which we think is clearly shown on this particular area. Next. Just to highlight some of the changes we made and presented to you on May 18, we reduced the number of units from 97 to 95. We increased the southern side yard setback of the south building. It was previously at 40 feet, which the code requires. We've increased it by 10 additional feet, provides some additional green space for the benefit of the homeowner located directly to the south on the east side of Evans. And then also, the setback of the southern driveway to Evans has been increased from what was originally 10 feet to 20 feet. Those changes are shown over on the right-hand side of the diagram. Next. We already talked about the fact that we relocated nine parking spaces along the southern boundary of the site, moved those to that area that's highlighted in red that shows 10 replacement parking spaces. That's the plan that was presented to the zoning board of appeals. And then, in addition, we've increased the setback of our proposed fence along the southern boundary of the site from what was six feet originally to 10 feet. That's to give some additional green space between the neighboring property at 81 Evans, existing driveway, which is on the northern boundary of their site, and the development portion of our site. So that will give the appearance of their yard having a width of approximately 10 feet greater than it actually does. Next. Then finally, in terms of layout, in terms of modifications to the layout of the project, we've increased the setback of the southern building, which is shown on the right-hand side, to 20 feet. We've increased the setback of the northern building to 25 feet. We've also added labeling of the setbacks of each of the three buildings, both from the property line as well as the paved portion of the Evans Street. Right away, we've increased the middle building setback from the curb line, where it is showed as 29 to 33.25 feet. And then in terms of the southern building, 33.5 to 33.42 feet. So now, based on those changes that we presented on May 18, we really do have buildings, while they're larger than the existing single-family homes on the opposite side of Evans, in terms of consistency for front yard setbacks, they're largely the same. And this plan really illustrates that fact. That's as a result of changes we made based on very specific input you provided during your meeting on May 4. Next. This, I don't think we need to spend time on, but really, what we tried to do here in terms of making those changes, both to front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, was to try and create some diversity in terms of the appearance of these buildings, having a little bit varied setback, working with the existing grades, and then again, trying to make this more closely aligned with the front yard. to make this more closely aligned with the front yard setbacks of single-family homes in the immediate vicinity. Next. We've already presented the updated landscaping plan, and that's consistent with what I've already shown you. That was included in the updated set, so I just wanted to reiterate that fact. Next. So I was present, I was present during the work session where there were some comments received relative to the headlight diagram that we submitted. So on the right-hand side, that's a diagram that was prepared by Tredo engineers. On the left-hand side, that's a photo I actually took today. I did that because when I looked at Google Earth, there was previously actually a large tree located next to that driveway. Looks like it's relatively recently been replaced with a sidewalk. On that photo on the left-hand side, if you see those two gray areas, that's what remains of an existing or previous curb cut. So basically, our driveway, which will be located approximately there, to a large degree, lines up with the driveway directly across the street, but the northern portion of the driveway will be aligned somewhat with the southern edge of that home directly across the street at 98 Evans. It's important to note that there were some comments, well, maybe we need to do a little bit more detailed model. We do welcome input on that. I would note, in terms of the headlight heights that we're showing, 24 inches for a typical car, those are based on actual measurement. That's not to say that if there was a larger truck or a larger vehicle, that the headlights would be higher, but the most important point there is when you think about illumination levels from vehicles, there's a focus to those headlights. And if a vehicle's pulling out of that driveway, which does have a slight slope, generally speaking, the headlights will be targeted or aiming towards the actual paved portion of Evans. It's also important to note that that home across the street, not to minimize it, but that is an enclosed porch there, I'm not sure what the particular use is. One thing we would be willing to consider, but it would require input from this board as well as the adjoining property owners, is with respect to that particular home directly across the street at 98 Evans, if there was a need to have some discussion about landscaping, especially in light of the fact that the large tree was recently removed, we would certainly entertain that discussion. It's not uncommon to have driveways in the village or elsewhere in Western New York that are opposite existing single-family homes, but we do note, given the effort that we've made to try to incorporate a wide assortment of input from a wide assortment of stakeholders, we certainly would welcome some further discussion with this board as well as the owner of the property directly across the street. And we would certainly do that prior to your meeting in September. Can you go to the next slide? This is a color diagram that was also prepared by Tredo, showing the relocation of that driveway and showing approximately where it's aligned. You can see at that time, that large tree was still there, so the precise boundary of that driveway is difficult to tell. That's why I actually went out there today and took a photo. I thought that when I go down Evans, that tree was no longer there, and that was correct. So we have moved that driveway, and again, keep in mind, the purpose of relocating that driveway to the north was to increase the amount of green space for the benefit of the existing property owner directly to the south on the east side of Evans at 81. So we've done that, we've incorporated that change, added some green space for their benefit. That did require us, of course, to move that driveway, the southernmost driveway, somewhat to the north. Next. So while we did show you an elevation plan for the northern building during your meeting on May 18th, based on the fact that there was only a short two-week window to update the plan, Matt has gone further in detail and provided all four sides. Just want to highlight the changes that we did make and presented to you during your meeting on May 18th. So originally, the northern building was entirely three stories. Based on input received from this board, we modified that, but now it is a two- and three-story building. The middle section of that building consisting of three, three stories. The height of the previously proposed building was generally speaking 36 feet across the entire Evans frontage. Now that's changed, so the height of the northernmost portion of the building, which is on the left, is 26 feet. The height of the southernmost portion of the building, which is on the right on the top, is 28.66 feet, and then that middle segment, which occupies approximately a third of the frontage, would still have a height of 36 feet. It is important to note that if you look at the NMU design standards, three-story buildings with a height of 36 feet are expressly permitted. We have incorporated your input based on what you previously told us, and we really think now we have an elevation that mirrors the grade that gradually drops down in steps as you head north on Evans. So the next slide. What we didn't have when we were in front of you on May 18th was a rear elevation. The rear elevation shows you quite clearly that if you're looking at this from the back, viewing towards the west, that does have the appearance of a two-story building, and you can see where the grade drops off on the right-hand side of that diagram. So while a portion of the building will be three stories on the front, from the back, which is the Village Point Lane vantage point, it will have the appearance of a two-story building in its entirety. If you have any questions about the materials, how Matt came about these changes in terms of the design, Matt Long is on the, on the call and would be available to answer those questions. Next. So today, I did receive a copy of the letter that was submitted by Elizabeth Holmes on behalf of her client. I just want to, I just want to point out one thing with respect to that letter. There was what's purported to be a visual rendering of our building located within that letter. It's important to note that it really is not very accurate for a couple of reasons. Number one, we are no longer proposing a three-story building in its entirety for the north building, which this would suggest we are. And then number two, this really doesn't show the gradual step-down reduction in topography of the site. It makes it seem like it drops down in very precise steps, even suggests there would be a retaining wall or something of the sort along Evans. The other thing that's important to note, I guess this is a view or supposed to be a view from Belmont, the way this diagram's been prepared, it would almost suggest that the west side of Evans is relatively flat. It also does show a fourth-story porch, so it's not an accurate depiction of what's there today. And again, it's important to note, rather than just looking at this from one particular perspective, we have to keep in mind the character of that entire area, which is not exclusively single-family homes, is not exclusively one particular setback or one building type, but this is not an accurate representation of the rendering. I would also note that in that letter, there's a quote that I, I kind of thought was somewhat interesting, basically saying that "this particular rendering demonstrates and highlights the shocking discord between the proposed project and the modest single-family residences on the west side of Evans, which will bear the brunt of the demonstrated adverse impact of this development. The construction of the three-story proposed structures along Evans will create a wall and tunnel-like aesthetic along this portion of the village." What we need to keep in mind here is the objective standards specified in great detail in the NMU design standards. We have been forced, and we have designed a project that complies with those standards, so I kind of found that quote to be inappropriate. Really, that quote targets the code itself, not the project that we're proposing. We are demonstrating compliance with the criteria, and really, that's what the job of the planning board is in reviewing this particular request for site plan approval. Next. We showed this to you last time. This is figure 67, pulled directly from page 28 of the NMU design standards, meant to denote an appropriate residential building. If you look at our north building in particular, that consists of two stories on the northern portion, two stories on the southern portion, and then a middle segment that extends to three stories at 36 feet. This is exactly what's shown in the design standards. In fact, this particular building has a much bigger middle portion with a height of three stories and probably a height that's either close or at 36 feet. So we think really, if you look at that particular illustration, that's exactly what we've done. The southern building and the middle building, of course, will consist entirely of two stories. Next. That's the rendering pulled right from the NMU design standards of what's denoted as an inappropriate residential building. I think we can all agree, we're proposing nothing that would suggest or be anything consistent with that. So if you look at those two renderings, pulled directly, again, from the NMU design standards, we think we're consistent with what the village has established as an allowable multifamily building. Next. Within the letter that was submitted by Ms. Holmes today, there was reference to the historic home located to the south of the site, 135 Evans, I believe. I just wanted to reiterate the fact that SHPO was asked to comment on that, and they did. On May 14th, they issued an email basically stating, yes, they're aware of the structure, and yes, while it may be eligible, they had no concerns. In the meantime, the village is in the process of designating that, I'm not sure if that's done. That's fine, we don't think this project in any way will interfere with the integrity of that historic structure, which we do acknowledge while not being contiguous to the project site, is historic. So I just want to note that there's no attempt to say, hey, that is not a historic structure, that is not a resource, but that particular topic has been evaluated extensively in connection with the coordinated environmental review pursuant to the State Environmental Quota Review Act that resulted in your issuance of a negative declaration on May 18th. Next. So these are probably the most important slides. This is new information compared to what's been presented to you before. So if you look at section 112-23E3 of the zoning code, it has a list of the criteria that this board is required to consider in connection with the request for site plan approval. So I'm going to walk through these quickly, and I would welcome any input you have. A, the requirements of any village development plan, comprehensive plan, and/or official map, as the same may have been adopted. We think we meet those, we discussed that in great detail. B, the proposed location of principal and accessory buildings and other site improvements. As I indicated, the buildings, accessory buildings, and other site improvements, with two exceptions, do comply with a wide assortment of objective standards in the code for front yard, side yard, rear yard, size of building, height of building, et cetera, requirements. Criteria C, relation to one another of traffic circulation within the site, height and bulk of the buildings, provisions for off-street parking space, provision of buffer areas and other open spaces on the site, so any development will adequately handle pedestrian and vehicle traffic within the site and in relation to the street system adjoining. Traffic impacts was one of the topics that was looked at extensively in connection with the environmental review. In fact, the village did something that's somewhat atypical, retained the services of an independent traffic engineer who reviewed the traffic impact study prepared by SRF Associates that was updated on two occasions based on input, and basically, at the end of that, SRF associates, the village's traffic engineer, that was retained at our cost, as well as Erie County Department of Public Works, which has jurisdiction over Evans, agreed that from a traffic perspective, this would not have any potentially significant adverse environmental impacts. We're obviously showing pedestrian amenities along the Evans frontage based on input we received over the course of the past year, so we think quite clearly we demonstrate compliance with that criteria. Criteria D, snow removal provisions, I'll come back to that in a second with the plan. Criteria E, location of permanent signage. I just want to make it clear for the record, we have not proposed any signage to date. That will happen in the future and will require a separate approval from this board. Adequacy of the off-street parking, as we indicated, the ZBA granted an area variance on June 17th to allow 110 parking spaces, so we're complying with that criteria. G, proper drainage and stormwater management pursuant to section 11228 of this code, road alignment, and other aspects which may require review by engineering authorities. So in connection with this project, Tredo engineers, which is a reputable licensed civil engineering firm, did prepare a fully engineered plan, an engineer's report, and a stormwater pollution prevention plan. That document, those documents consist of hundreds of pages of technical analysis. That was submitted for review by the village's consulting engineer, Ed Schiller of Williams Shutton Associates. And on February 3rd of this year, Mr. Schiller most recently issued a letter stating that all the drawings, he specifically referenced the SWIP, the engineered plan, the water and sanitary sewer plans, are in compliance with the applicable standard. So that clearly denotes that we meet that criteria. I would note that the letter that was submitted today from Ms. Holmes did include a letter from Bruce Benson raising some concerns about drainage impacts for the existing town home project directly or one parcel over to the south of the site. I think during your work session, you indicated you would refer that letter to Williams Shutton Associates for comment input. We welcome that, but again, we've demonstrated compliance with the very stringent stormwater quality and stormwater quantity standards of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, including perhaps, most importantly, the need to retain a 100-year storm event on-site. So compared to drainage conditions on the site today, it will be a large enhancement, and therefore, we think that the issue raised in Mr. Benson's letter really is not particularly relevant, but we do welcome the input from Mr. Schower, the village's licensed engineer. Next. So I just want to make sure it's clear that we have denoted on our site plan, three separate snow storage areas. Those areas represent approximately 10% of the pavement surface. The village's code doesn't actually have a specific objective requirement for the size of snow storage areas. The only code that we're aware of in Western New York that actually has that is the village of Ellicottville, where obviously it snows much more, and their standard is 10% of the pavement surface, so we've used that as our standards. So we are obviously aware of the fact that there's a need for snow storage areas. Those are shown on our fully engineered plans, and we think they're clearly adequate and consistent with that criteria. Next. Moving on, in terms of the criteria specified in section 11223E3, lighting, we did submit a lighting plan with our fully engineered plans. Most importantly, we demonstrated zero-foot candles at all property lines. So there will be no lighting spillover onto adjoining properties. I, lot surface, it's not really clear what that means, but it is important to note that 2.635 acres, or 50% of our project site in its developed state, will consist of green space and landscaping. Criteria K, landscaping, we've already discussed the fact that we've submitted a landscaping plan that demonstrates compliance with the standards in the NMU design objectives. And then finally, O, M and N don't apply because they only apply to projects in the R3M district or in the MU district. Criteria O, with respect to any application relating to a lot or lots within the NMU district, conformance with the applicable neighborhood mixed-use district design standards set forth in section 11217. We've spent a lot of time demonstrating compliance with those standards. I think out of all the site plan criteria, that's probably the most important one, and we think we've met all those requirements in great detail. Next. So I want to leave off with the two waivers that we're asking. These were presented to you during your meeting on May 18th. It is important to note that with respect to both those waivers, we had discussion during that meeting whether it was the preference of this board for us to seek variances from the zoning board of appeals, knowing we were going back to them in June, or to leave that and have you make a decision on the waivers. Your decision at that time was leave them as waivers, do not seek variances from the zoning board of appeals, so that's what we've done. Those two waivers from, the code are, number one, southern side yard setback of the south building. The code permits a maximum of 40 feet. We've moved that 10 feet further, so we're now at 50 feet. We discussed in detail why that was done, provide additional green space and buffering for the homeowner located on the east side of Evans, directly contiguous to site. And then secondly, in order to provide some diversity in terms of setbacks, the front yard setback of the north building, measured from the Evans right away, has been increased to 25 feet. That's five feet and is greater than permitted by the NMU design standards. So those are the two waivers. It's important to note that both of those are in direct response to input you provided to us during your meeting on May 4th. They're not integral to the project moving forward, meaning if ultimately those waivers were denied, we would update the plans back to where we previously were and demonstrate compliance. That is not our preference. We think both those changes make sense, but I just want to make it clear, unlike the typical request for waivers that would come in front of you, this is actually to incorporate input that we in front of you, this is actually to incorporate input that we received rather than doing something less than what would otherwise be required by the code. Next slide, Tim. So the standards for waivers are set forth in Section 11223H of the code. Chip highlighted these during the work session. We're going to talk about them very briefly. Two, it can never be a waiver deviation of more than 50%, which these aren't. Three, it does say that obviously we could go to the zoning board of appeals or ask for a waiver from you. As I indicated during your meeting on May 18th, you expressed a preference to retain jurisdiction over those waivers. And then criteria number four, it is limited to what can be waived. For example, we could not have asked for a waiver from the parking, number of parking spaces from this board. So then turning back to the first bullet point on this slide, the criteria to be applied by this board in connection with the request from waiver is that strict conformance of the design standards governing such application is impractical or impossible. Obviously, here, it's not impossible. The reason why it's impractical, in my opinion, is it's based on specific input we've received from this board. It makes the layout better than it otherwise would be. So we think quite clearly, other strong justification for the granting of those two requested waivers. Again, with it being noted that the granting of either of those waivers is not essential to the viability of the project itself. And then finally, Tim. That wraps up our presentation, and we would welcome any questions the board has. I want to reiterate one more time, we're not asking for a decision this evening. We do welcome your input. We're hoping that when we come back to your meeting in September or late August, whenever you meet, that you will finally be in a position to issue a decision on the petting request for site plan approval and architecture approval. Thanks for providing us with the opportunity to present the project once again this evening, and I'm done.
Anyone have any questions for Sean?
Wes, actually, I do. Let me just get back on here. Sean, you did a great job going through everything, but earlier in your presentation, the NMU standards, there was a, I started reading it, there was a section that talked about matching the fabric of the village, and I didn't, you kind of went through that one quick, and I didn't read it all. Tim, is it, we go back to that? It talks about?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, of course, Mr. Lester. So yeah, we presented that to you twice previous, I believe, but yes, if Tim wants to scroll back to that, absolutely. Tim, it's up quite a ways. It's about a third of the way through. I don't have the slide number. Hold on. Begins on Slide 9.
It's, it was, there was probably about eight points on the?
Okay, so go to the next, I think it's the next slide, Mr. Lester. I think it's there. Not that slide, Tim, the slide directly before it, I believe. Slide number 10. If you can just scroll up one. One more. There. I think that's the slide you're probably referencing.
There was probably 10, 10 points on that, on the thing. It wasn't just a?
Yeah, it's, it's a slide that comes from page 26 of the plan, and it's actually, Tim, Slide number 10. I think I, I'm not following the slide we're on here now. So up one. There. I think that's the slide.
No, it?
Those are the, oops, we lost it again.
Yeah, I don't know if you're going to find it, but it talks about basically fitting in with the village and the characters, characteristics of the village and, you know, I just, it talks a little bit about that.
Yeah, so let me, I, I actually have the presentation pulled up on my computer, so let me, let me, so I think what you're referencing, Mr. Lester, is page 26 of the community plan that was adopted by the Board of Trustees. That sets forth the 11 design principles of the NMU zoning district. And I'm just going to highlight the ones I think you're referencing. The third criteria, third bullet point, new development should be sensitively integrated into the fabric of the existing village, rather than consisting of isolated and self-contained pods surrounded by surface parking. Think that's what you mean?
Exactly.
Right, so we think we've met that criteria for the following reasons. Number one, obviously, this is not an isolated and self-contained pod surrounded by surface parking. Our parking is in the back, does comply with the NMU design objectives. In fact, we're proposing less parking than would otherwise be required by the code, so we could keep additional green space along the back for the benefit of Village Point Way. And then in terms of sensitively integrated, I guess I would again defer to the standards. The standards set forth how you sensitively integrate a project into the fabric of the existing village. Again, this is a mixed-use area, so since we've demonstrated compliance with those standards, with the exception of the two waivers, which we think improve the layout, we think we quite clearly have satisfied that criteria.
Thanks for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Don, what is the height of the middle building?
I'm going to, Matt, are you on? Matt Long?
Matt? Can you hear me? Yeah, I was double muted. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Matt, so the question is, yeah, Amy asked the question, what is the height of the middle building?
Let me pull up right now. East, middle. So again, it depends where you're looking at it. Looking at it from Evans, it is 296 from the lowest point at the northernmost side to the top of the roof, the ridge of the roof. And again, that varies as it does with the north building, the changes that we made. I don't know if we have, Tim, do you have this by any chance, the old submission on your computer that you could bring up if they'd want to look at it? Because I don't know if people's memory is in this, but if you, if you remember, there are two, it's basically bookends in the center building. The left two look like two houses. The right bookend is two buildings look like two houses, and the middle drops down where the main entry has a flat roof and a community porch there. So again, this reinforces the idea of making a varied, a varied facade, not just one homogenous one roof line, right? So it's mimicking that in the middle building and mimicking it now will be done in the changes in the north building, which we think works really well.
Okay, so the 296 is the two ends essentially, where they would be taller?
Right.
Okay. Because there's been some discussion about it still being three-story part of the north building, but I guess in my eyes, the difference between 296 in the middle building and 36 in the north building is not really that significant because of the grade change, right? I mean, that's like a six-foot difference in the height of the buildings, but you have a 14-foot grade change, so the north building may end up actually looking shorter than the middle building at some point, or the roof line would at least be lower.
Right. Sure. It depends on where, see, because it's a very hard discussion to have without really being there on the site and looking at it, but since the grade does ebb and flow so much, and as you're pushing away from Evans, it goes up as well. Every time we move the building a foot or move it down a bit, it creates that constantly undulating and variating, or varying height in relation to grade. So right, that could be the case in certain areas of it.
Okay. I would like to point out that the proposed updated south elevation of the north building along the bottom of the screen here, where the porches come out, that, where that, where that mark is taken on that drawing is not the same as what's shown above to the rightmost portion of the proposed updated Evans Street elevation north building, because it wouldn't be 28 feet 8 inches. That would be at the rear of the building. It wouldn't be at the front of the building along Evans Street, because that height is taken back there. So, I mean, that's where I, I mean, I'm thinking that's where you were talking about, it looking like still a three-story building, because you have the, I'm guessing that there's no apartment bound there, but that's some kind of crawl space or basement structure on the south side of that north building there that we see depicted as brick, where these stairs come down to be grade, but in fact, on that portion of the building, the second bay over from the right, from the south, it is a three-story building. And then as you move over, it's two and a half stories of this. So, I mean, maybe, is that where Amy, you were, you were talking about it still looking like a three-story building? I'm on mute.
Amy, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, no, I was looking at the height of what the actual peak of the roof lines would be from Evans, noting that in the north building, in the middle section where it's a full three stories, the actual maximum height of the roof line will either be in line or actually below the roof line of the middle building, because the north building is on the slope, right? So where that full three stories is, that's a lower elevation than where the middle building is. So the roof line may end up being the same, or the north building may actually have a lower, or roof elevation at that point.
Amy, this is, this is Matt Long again, from Long Associates Architects. I understand what she's saying for the rest, members of the rest of the board here. She's saying that because the slope from, if you're at the north building working to the middle building, because the grade changes so much, the relationship of the left side of the middle building for where it goes from the bottom of the building to the peak may actually look higher, because we're working our way downhill in relation to that other one. So is that what you're saying, the relationship of the max height is lower because the grade is changing?
Right, because the dim is off. The dim, the dim is shown from the rear of that north building. It should, it should be at the bottom of the grade shown to the rightmost portion of the north building, that top portion, the top elevation on sheet A201. The dim isn't correct. So it's actually like a two-and-a-half story building because of the grade at certain points, and a full three stories because of the grade as you move towards the center portion of the north building.
Right, from the front, it looks like a full three-story. But I'm saying if you look at the roof line of the north, the middle, and the south buildings, right, because of the grade change of the north building, even that three-story section is going to look in line with the other two buildings, if not actually a little bit lower.
I understand that.
Okay.
But if you're directly in front of it, or you're somewhere in the vicinity of that, one of, one of those three buildings, you're looking at a three-story building.
You are.
For, for one, two, two, three, almost three bays of the one, two, three, four, five, six-bay building, and the other one is at two-and-a-half stories.
If my opinion would be that I, I like the diversity that the three-story gives, because otherwise, I think that building will end up just looking like a staircase. If it's two-story, the entire, with a cross, you'll have one here, and then the next one down, and the next one down, and the next one down, and I think that building would look very awkward if, you know, each unit went down by three feet. It'll end up looking like a staircase going down the hill if they don't have some sort of height variation to the unit.
You mean on A202, the proposed updated north elevation of the north building?
I don't know what.
I think it's A20, this is Sean, I think A201.
No, it's A202. I'm looking at it right here, the drawing set that we were given on Friday.
So you're looking at the front or the back of the building?
I'm looking?
That's the back of the building.
Building, the, the northern elevation. What you will see if you're coming down Evans from?
No, I was referring to the, to the front, from the Evans side.
Right, but you're talking about looking like it's a staircase with the foundation line, and that's what we're viewing on the north building's north elevation.
Right, but I think Amy's talking about the front of the building.
I was talking about the front of the building and the roof line looking like a staircase if each of those, you know, individual looking rate is consecutively lowered down the grade change.
Right, but look at, look at this bottom drawing on A202. Even the roof lines look like this.
Right, Kate's, Kate's referring to the bottom, the bottom illustration of drawing A202. I think, Amy, you're referencing A201, just to clarify.
Right, I was looking at the Evans frontage.
This is, I mean, this, this view, the north building, north elevation, will also be seen as you are coming down. It's the front elevation that you see when you are going south on Evans. You, you, the setbacks they have, you're not going to be staring directly, only people that are going to be staring directly at these elevations are people coming down Belmont's, at the stop sign, or the residents directly across the street, or pedestrians coming down the sidewalks. When you're in vehicular traffic, your first impression is the north building, north elevation when you are coming from the exit direction.
Yeah, it is, it is important to note that keep in mind, along, along, the north side, there is a lot of vegetation that will be preserved. I mean, there's some pretty mature trees there, so there probably will be a vantage point. I think Kate is right where you would see this, but generally, traffic, traveling south on Evans, heading, you know, into the village center, you're not going to see this entire side of the, side of the building, generally speaking.
Well, I think too, that's a, that's a byproduct of the fact that we didn't want that building to be three stories the entire width. So by making the north end two stories with the Evans frontage, that's what the building ends up looking like.
Right.
To rectify that, we'd have to put it back to three stories.
This is, uh, this is Matt Long from Long Associates Architects again. Speaking to this a little bit, Amy, Amy and Kate, you're both right, what you're saying here. So what Kate was trying to say, I believe, is she was saying that the Evans Street facade, if you were doing what you were saying, making it look like a staircase, it would look like this bottom one on A202. Is that correct, Kate?
No. I'm saying your dim is off. On A1, A201, from your top elevation on your sheet to your bottom elevation on your sheet. Your dim on the top elevation is dimming the rear of the building. It should be dimming where the grade is on Evans.
So really, it should be another four or five feet more, probably.
It is. It's a, it's a half a story. It's more than five. I'm just pointing that out, so everyone's clear.
If we're going to talk about this building a little more, I do not like the three-story in the middle of the front. I would rather see the staircase effect going down the hill. You're going down a hill, I think the building roof line should mimic the hill that you're going down, going north on Evans.
I also do not like the three stories in the middle. I agree with Wes.
Yeah, and this, and this is Sean, and those points are well-taken. I guess all I would ask the board to consider is, you know, keep in mind what the NMU you know, keep in mind what the NMU design standards are. It's three stories and thirty-six feet.
Right, we also have to keep in mind what's up and down the street, too.
What do you mean by that?
I don't think there's a three-story building within several blocks of us.
There are houses across the street that would look very similar.
You think they'd be three and a half, three-story, three and a half story?
I, I-
There might be some two and a half stories.
Two stories with a third floor dormer, roof on it.
So if you took that middle unit-
They're definitely of similar height.
Okay, well, I don't think it's in keeping with the street.
Well, I think, I guess, I guess this is Sean again, that, that goes back to your vantage point, right? If you're, if you're solely considering comparing it to the west side of Evans, rather than the context of the overall neighborhood, then I guess that point's well taken. And there's no disrespect meant here for the chairman, but I guess what we're asking you to consider is the standards and the effort we've made to really mimic a building that really does match what is delineated as an appropriate building in the village, right from the design standards. You know, we showed you that photograph, it's exactly, it's exactly what the building is.
Okay, my, my opinion, it doesn't fit with the neighborhood, so.
Okay.
Any other comments on the building? Should we move on to site?
The only house in that vicinity that it had is tall is the one on the corner of Belmont and Evans. The rest are one-story, two-story, a lot of one and a half story that we went through last year. There are, there is a four-square, so they've got the Victorian on the corner of Belmont and, um, and Evans there. And that is, if I look at the site plan-
It's about the biggest house in the neighborhood there.
That is directly across where the three-story would be. The other three-story moving south, because of the grade change, you have, you start off with three stories and the second two bays to the south side is, so that would be bays five and six, moving left to right on the Evans elevation of the northern building. You, the three-story built portion there is directly across from Belmont. And then the other one is, is on the other side of Belmont, last, best portion of that there. So you've got the three-story Victorian, and then moving up the street, you have a two-story, um, house, very, much smaller in stature than the Victorian, in height and width. And you can see via the Google Maps, um, street view, that there is a big elevation change from that Victorian at three stories down to the more modest house at two stories, moving to the north. Then you have, you can see in Google Street View, even, even more of a, a grade change moving on Evans Street, that you now have a four-square American with a third-story dormer at the roof line, which doesn't look, it looks very small compared to, very small compared to that Victorian. You know, small compared to the, what I assume was Greek Revival at some point, um, blue house there. So everything looks like it's really stepping down, even though they're, they're two-story homes to the north of that Victorian. So there's just, there's a big grade, grade change there, on that side of the street as well. I wish I could share my view, but I can't.
I mean, I think it would be prudent for everyone to spend some time before we make this vote, to look at the neighborhood and honestly, look at all the houses that are across the street in a better perspective.
I agree, we should all do a little walking tour on our own down there. I know we all have, but we should all refresh our memories, take another spin down there and look around.
Or, this is, uh, this is Matt Long again. I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but, um, and I don't know if this is something that you'd want to do, but I'd be more than happy to meet everybody down there if you coordinated, and you could look at it together with us, with a drawing in hand, so you get a bit of a better understanding of what you're looking at. Because I think that there's different people looking at this, and they say, they're looking at it black and white, saying three or two, and maybe you can get a better understanding of it with somebody there with you. And I'd be more than happy to do that, if you deemed it appropriate.
This is Sean, the other change that we made, keep in mind, for the north building, and this was based on your input during your meeting on May 4th, keep in mind that we did increase that setback five feet further. So while a zero-foot setback would be allowed by the NMU design standards, and I'm not saying that would be appropriate with respect to the north building, we're now at twenty-five feet, meaning we're actually have a larger setback than what's allowed by code. And if you see how far that setback from the pavement, it's actually forty-four feet on the southern corner of the northern building, and forty-eight feet on the northern corner of the nor- northern building. So, you know, we have incorporated the input that we've received from you relative to that particular building.
Okay, but if you went-
Go ahead.
Where that, where the third, the three-story section is in the middle of this building, if you went from the elevation at the curb to the elevation of the ground at that unit, how much higher is that? Would you guess?
Uh, let me, let me bring up our grading plan, if I could look at, it's in our other thing, hold on a second.
Here is the three-story Victorian across the street, directly across the three-story portion of the northern building.
Right, which I, I would call that a two and a half story myself.
Well, they-
And that-
They threw full-size windows with, with the same shutters, I mean-
Right, but I'm looking at the roof, if it doesn't have a full, if there's not full standing headroom on that third floor, I don't call that a three-story building.
Oh, I bet you there's a full standing-
There is.
Room in there.
There is.
All right, there is in the middle, but I think there's not in the corner of that building, anyway.
True.
Yeah, just to, just to make it clear for the record, that's the, that's the home that's located on the southwest corner of Evans and Belmer.
Right, usually has the decorations out.
You're right.
Or another.
So Chairman Stone, back to your question of the grade change between, did you say from the curb, uh, could you repeat that, from the curb to the base of the building?
To the, the ground, the grade at the building foundation.
So this is going to be kind of a, a half answer here, because there's so many different points where it hits. So, let's look, looking at the current plan on the left-hand side of the building, which we have reduced to two stories, two-point-two-five stories, let's call it. How about that? We are at a spot elevation of the street at six-hundred-forty-seven-point-zero, and at the building, we're at six-fifty-two, so about five feet. But keep in mind, though, that, but, again, if you just look at a number, and you're looking, you're comparing a number to another number, without being there over the course of twenty-five feet, plus the sidewalk width, plus the curb to grass area there, five feet, you go, oh crap, that building's five feet higher. When in reality, it's a gradual slope that works with the land. You can't, it's, you could look at it where you want to, because you're looking at how you have to. But that doesn't, that's not how, it's not black and white. It's working with what's there.
Okay, all right, thank you, I understand.
And I think that, just one other thing that I wanted to bring up, um, not to, you know, if I, if I may, um, when going back to the idea of the front elevation of the north building stepping up and down and having, in effect, a two and a half story at the right side, I just want to bring to your attention again that we have the ability to massage this grade a little bit, to make that appear like it's a little bit less. And I want to, it's, everything is working, it's sloping in two different directions. It's sloping from south to north downhill, and it's also sloping from the street back up the hill. So there are ways to massage that. If you're looking at that line, and the board deems that we want that to look a little softer, and to not appear, appear as high where it actually physically hits that grade, I think we can massage that a little bit to make that work. But we're always working back towards that middle three-story portion. Because keep in mind that this is not a building that are, these are not separate buildings where you walk up. This is one building that has three floors, and in some cases, two floors, that is for people, not only for accessible people, but it's adaptable for seniors, it's adaptable for people with developmental disabilities, it's adaptable for my cousin who has Down Syndrome, who's in a wheelchair now. It's adaptable for everybody in the world to come in here and be a part of Williamsville, not just one type of person that may be able to walk around. And that's why that's like that. So if we're, at some point, it would be, you have to have elevator access, and we have to be able to accommodate everybody out there, and that's what we have in doing so, in working with the grade. If we didn't have that middle three-story in there, we would have basically in the corridor, a giant lift somewhere, and/or a series of steps in the corridor, which wouldn't make sense for accessibility. So while it's only a matter of black and white here, and looking at, we don't like how this looks, maybe it doesn't fit, I'd emphasize the whole, the totality of the project, as well as the variation within the community. I mean, you can look at that outside across the street, okay, that's the only house like that. Well, it's there, and it's, we estimate it at thirty-three feet high. So now we're adding a couple more houses that work with the grade of the land, and then we, we get back to the portion where we can work with the grade better and squat it down. That adds variation within your community, which I think is something that your code is trying to do. And I feel that you're getting hung up a lot on the, just the number three, in my mind.
Hey Matt, can you pull up, um, A201 on yours, on the screen, or have someone else do it?
Tim, would you be able to share that with the whole screen?
Is it the one that, the one that was just dropped off?
Tim, no, that's-
Yes.
If you look at the presentation, it's slide, Kate, are you asking for the one that was, I had that at slide twenty-nine of the presentation, is that what you're asking for?
Sure, I'm looking at my drawing set.
I think if you go to slide, it's got slide number twenty-nine on the bottom right, Tim, in white. I believe that's the request.
Oh, yeah, wait there. So Matt, bays, let's see, three, four, five, six. It has the same hatch pattern, it's only called out once, as brick type B. Is that correct? That we've got, actually, it's on all bays. Um, yeah, so do we have one brick type along the entire, we'll call it a, 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 a story that's closest to the grade?
Oh, I'm muted, I'm sorry. I told you a lot of things, Kate, and, uh, hopefully you liked them. We'll try again, hopefully you like it this time. Um, okay, so you, you're saying at the updated Evans Street front elevation at the north building, brick type B, which is at the second to rightmost bottom grade, God, I wish I had a pointer here, but describing something, go follow Treasure map here. Brick type B at the bottom right of that building, is that correct?
So does brick type B go right across the elevation, um, at the, we'll say the foundation line of bays five and six? Does it go right across the entire building through all bays?
It does, and I, if this isn't clear, we can update it, so from-
Oh, it is clear, I think that's causing problems for you. Because it's accentuating your three-story building in the middle, because you're now taking that same brick pattern and using it as a foundation line. And you're using it as a foundation line almost because it's this, it's this brick over at your two-story buildings on the left. So possibly if you changed up something, I don't know, I'm not the designer here, but, but really look at that, and, and notice how that looks on the pedestrian scale of having the same brick type right across your entire building, even though grades change and the heights of buildings change, and how that makes your bays five and six feel. Because there's no windows, the grade is changing, and that's where a basement or foundation should be.
Right.
You get it.
I do, I thought I was muted again. Can't remember, yes, I do. You know, I sort of fell on deaf ears when I said I'd meet you guys out there. I'm, I'm serious about meeting you out there, I want to get out of the house. I've been in COVID lockdown for a while. We can be socially distant, and we can hang out there. I'll point at some things, you could point at some things. I think that would be really helpful to have people understand exactly what's going on here and get a feel of it.
I need to have you a good idea. Well, as long as we're on the subject, if we were to do a little field trip, would dinnertime some night be good?
Are you, uh, Jim and Stone, if you're- If you're asking us to buy you dinner, that is a bribe, we cannot do that. We would come out around dinnertime, and I might have some food with me, yeah, okay.
I know, Kate, Kate, is there a good time for you that might?
Nap time.
Nap time.
Well, like, one-thirty to three-thirty.
That's-
Oh, that's, that's actually my nap time for my kids, too, so that would work.
Would everybody be available, one-thirty to three-thirty some afternoon? Say two, two-thirty some afternoon?
Make that work.
Make time.
Okay.
Well, so I pushed this so hard here, how would we coordinate this? I can, would this go through Tim, or I could share a proposed schedule here?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you go through Tim?
I can, I can work something up.
Yeah, he can send out-
Matt, I'll call you tomorrow.
Yeah, figure out something-
Okay, sounds good, Tim, thank you.
And tentatively, two-thirty sounds like a good time, we could vote three or four days in and see what works.
So, the, and just for the benefit of, I mean, so this is essentially going to be a field trip, but a meeting, um, so it's, it's going to be open to the public, so we'll, we'll let people know when that's going to be, and if other people want to hang along in a socially distant, appropriate manner, they're welcome to do that.
That sounds good. Okay, that's, sounds like a plan. Okay, and Tim will coordinate that, and with, uh, and we'll see what we can come up with for a day.
Yep, I'll send something out tomorrow, I'll talk with Matt tomorrow, we'll see what we can get started, so.
Okay. Anything else on the architectural plans we'd like to talk about? Anything on the site plan we'd like to talk about?
Did the applicant reach out to the town as far as a driveway on the other side of the property?
Yeah, because I believe all we have is a letter back from the highway department that the village submitted, and I think would be appropriate for the applicant to request that curb cut to Village Point Lane.
I thought that's been settled months ago.
No, it hasn't, not in my opinion, it hasn't.
Not in my opinion.
I think not in Traffic and Safety's opinion either.
Oh, boy.
So Chairman, just, just to confirm, what are you asking for, just so I make sure it's clear?
I believe that the planning board is requesting that the applicant apply to the town of Amherst the site plan for a curb cut to Village Point Lane. That's been the recommendation of the village, Traffic and Safety. Uh, that's been some comments from the planning board members over this past year. I think all we have is a letter from the, kind of a informal letter back from the highway department saying he would not allow a curb cut, but I think the applicant needs to officially apply for a curb cut.
Yeah, so his, so the, I just pulled open, pulled up the letter from Pat Lucy, the superintendent of highways from the town of Amherst Highway Department, and the second sentence of his letter says, "I would like to explain why I'm refusing to issue this curb cut permit and how I reached my decision." So I took that to mean, you know, he's not permitting it. If you want me to submit a letter, asking him for form, or denied, I kind of think he already has, but I certainly can do that, I think we already know the answer.
I think he needs an official application from the applicant, showing where that curb cut's going to go, where it will go, and go from there.
There, there is no, yeah, I would just note, the Amherst does not have a specific application for that. They have criteria in their code. I did inquire about that.
Okay, now, would that be submitted through the planning department? My understanding-
No, it goes directly, no, it doesn't, it doesn't- No, it goes directly, no, it doesn't, it's solely based on the town of Amherst Town Code. It solely falls within the jurisdiction of the highway superintendent. It's nothing to do with planning, town board, planning board, traffic safety board. It's solely within its jurisdiction.
Sean, it's Kevin Lester, is there something in that letter that we're not aware of? The reasons he gave?
Well, he, he gave a whole litany of the history. Basically said it would increase the vehicular traffic on Village Point Lane. He said that he's also reviewed past village aboard, village of Williamsville Board Meeting Minutes that were held in 87, 88, 89, and 90. And saying that at general time, there was opposition to connecting Reinwall and Academy to Village Point Lane. So I think he tried to reference past precedent. But the letter kind of speaks for itself, we can obviously, uh, the village has a copy of that. I guess what I would ask is for Tim or Chip to distribute that to everyone. If you specifically want me to put in a letter requesting that, I'll certainly do that, Chairman Stone. I just want to make sure it's clear, it's not a specific application for itself.
Okay, I just, the applicant should apply for that curb cut permit. And then if it's denied, it's denied, but I think you're, I think you're the one that should apply for it.
Okay, if that's, if that's what you'd like us to do, we certainly can do that. And the other thing I want to note is obviously, it's been clear on the record from previous meetings that the residents on Village Point Lane were vehemently opposed to that. I just want to make that clear.
Oh, I, I, I understand that. But I, we also have the village traffic and safety committee that thinks that driveway would be appropriate, so. I think we need to.
No, fair enough, you're.
Cross all RTs.
Okay, no, that's fair enough, you're, you are correct, that was part of their comments, okay. I'll do that.
Okay, thanks.
Just so everyone's, and I'm not, I'm just, for the record, that, that letter is among all the, the documents.
All right, I understand.
So.
I think we all read the letter.
Yeah.
I wondered if there was something else that we didn't know about.
Oh, well, you mean like, that was expressed orally or something? I mean, I don't know.
No, no, that, that, as far as I know, that letter is it.
Yeah, I read the letter what, months ago.
Right.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it. I mean, I think the past presidents of not wanting Reinwald or Academy to come into Village Point Lane is a completely separate issue because that would create a lot of through traffic up where the houses are on Village Point Lane. But I personally feel like the applicant for the curb cut and one of the provisions could be that any traffic coming out of the development would be to make a left turn only. They could not turn and drive up into the residential neighborhood part of the point lane. They would have to make a left-hand turn and go directly to S-Day to exit the development.
All right, I agree, it is a dead end if you go up the other end anyway, but.
Right, Matt, I think part of the site plan that was reviewed, do we know if that was what was reviewed by Pat Lucy when he wrote that letter, that it was a left turn, left-hand turn only on Village Point Lane?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't think it was.
I don't think it was.
Right, but if that's stipulated as part of the application, then, you know, it may be a consideration that no cars would be driving into that part of Village Point Lane.
And maybe trade-o engineers could do the same headlight study for the people on Village Point Lane because that seemed to be a concern at the time. And there is no headlight problem over there because it's an office building, not a residential structure that would be impacted as far as the area number. So I think the same due diligence needs to be done, showing the impact so that we have a clear library of information as to how this impacts Evans residents as well as Village Point Lane residents.
I agree.
I agree. So I just wanted, this is Sean Hopkins, I just want to make sure we're clear here. So the request is that we ask for, uh, we submit a letter with plans asking for a formal determination from the highway superintendent, I just want to make sure it's clear. Is the board asking me to also, in connection with that request, say that we would post signage saying left-hand turn only?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, fair enough, okay.
And I think you're.
And I have a question. So we did the Balaqua project a couple of years ago, where part of the property was in Amherst. Part of the property was in Williamsville. And I believe it was only site plan and ancillary buildings that were impacted on the Amherst side. And that, I believe, went to the planning board. So I know this is for a curb cut, but I, is, is there any other amenity that is within the Amherst portion? Is it, so it's the easement portion for an apron? I mean, where does the line get drawn and does this, should this go to the Amherst Planning Board?
Uh, this is Sean Hopkins, there's nothing in our layout that would trigger jurisdiction by the town of Amherst Planning Board.
Sean, I haven't done the research and obviously you, you have, right? And you mentioned the criteria that Amherst lists for obtaining the curb cut, that there isn't a direct application, but there is criteria. What do you not mean about the criteria that they're turning this down?
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not going to speak for the highway superintendent for Amherst, but just to make it clear. So those, the standards for the issuance of a curb cut permit by the town's highway superintendent, again, who has sole jurisdiction or specified in chapter 95 of the town of Amherst Town Code, which is readily accessible online.
Okay.
And specifically, section 95.4 is titled Standards for Issuance of a Permit. And there's a whole host.
That's it, Sean.
Through, it's A through, boy, R, A through R, so there's a whole host of criteria.
And I've read that and wondering where on this site plan would a no-left-hand turn sign be placed? And if so, would that be placed in the town of Amherst portion, which then I believe would possibly trigger a site review?
No, so, so generally speaking, signage in the town of Amherst that relates to traffic, safety matters, DOT signage, et cetera, is all reviewed and approved by the town's traffic safety board. They actually have a traffic safety board that generally meets the first Wednesday of each month. That does not fall within the jurisdiction of the planning board itself. And I envision if such, if there was going to be a driveway connection onto Village Point Lane, you would have a no-left-hand turn sign on the right-hand side of the driveway connection, and then probably on the opposite side of the right way. That's, that's what I would propose.
Hey guys.
You know, put.
Looking at, looking at the property, I think the only way you could, would turn there would be left. Because if you turn right, you'd be going into the neighborhood.
You would, but if that's the resident's concern that there will be cars who do that, then we should eliminate that possibility.
Well, I just don't think cars doing it, but.
And we, the way you design a site plan appropriately is to give the correct information to the user that they need to successfully navigate the site as well as the surrounding sites. So it's, it would be completely appropriate, like at each one of these other proposed driveways onto Evans, that there should be stop signs there. We know what happens when there aren't stop signs, people just blow right through them. So we, we, we need to remind people what proper procedure is when exiting and entering the site.
Yeah, this is Sean again, I just want to make clear for the record, we'll make that request. I'm not optimistic that the highway superintendent will allow it. Again, it's contrary to what the Village Point residents have asked. And then finally, I just want to make it clear that if the highway superintendent comes back with what purports to be a formal denial, uh, we have absolutely no interest in challenging that. I mean, we are not going to sue the town of Amherst Highway Superintendent to challenge his decision, whether or not anyone agrees it's right or wrong. I don't, I don't think that would be a fair or appropriate standard or burden for us.
And we assume that, that you won't be suing this planning board based on our decisions because of how we feel moving forward as well then?
No, we're, we're, we're asking the decision be made based on the criteria in the code. Remember, we're not, we're not the party that's commenced any litigation. We're, we're on the same side as far as defending litigation, and our goal is to get a project that can be approved by this board. That's been our goal. I'm just, and the only reason I said that, Kate, is I'm just not optimistic the highway superintendent's going to allow that curb cut, that's all.
It would real, I really welcome a headlight study for the highway superintendent. If you felt it was a valuable document for this board, I think the same courtesy should be given to the highway superintendent of Amherst so that he can.
No, that's fair. Absolutely, we can do, we can do that, that's not hard, we'll do that. We can show where, we can show where that would be relative to the buildings on the opposite side of Village Point. And then Chip or Tim, just to make sure that you guys think that I'm getting the appropriate information to the highway superintendent, if you guys would like to look at what we're going to submit before we submit it and say, yeah, we agree, that's the content of what should be provided, that's absolutely acceptable. Our goal would be to provide whatever the village wants in connection with that request.
Yeah, I can look at, I'll, I'll pull up what was submitted to him last time. I think I'm the one who actually asked for the formal denial the first time based on what he sent, so I'll look and see what we asked for.
Okay.
I think Chairman, Chairman Stone be copied on that as well.
Yep, we normally.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
I'll copy the entire board with what we submit.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I know Kate, you had some comments about the headlight study.
Oh, I guess I said it wasn't worth study?
On Evans?
Okay, well, do I need to show my, show my sketches again? So my comments about the headlight study were that they looked at the average height of the, um, of the headlights, and I felt that the max range or the, of the median to max range would impact the house at 98 Evans. And I also thought that the 2D depiction was not, um, was not a document that was particularly helpful for me because I felt that a 3D depiction would show the cars turning at that driveway and how they impacted the neighboring houses for 98 Evans. I, I mean, I did measurements, like take the cars on my street at the time and took a yardstick out there to show how high those headlights were. And I was consistently, you know, higher measurements than the mean or average height that was depicted on, on the traffic study. I also felt that the, or not the traffic study, the headlights study. I also felt that the simplistic nature of the, the diagram, um, you know, just showed that a car would literally get stuck in the middle of Evans. And I know this is more of a DOT drawing, but would get stuck at the crest of, um, of Evans and not be able to make it to the other side because of the, um, the angle depiction of how a street has runoff on each side and is peaked in the middle. So, I mean, although I appreciate the effort, um, I feel that the, the information is skewed. The important information is that there is, there is a residential structure that has potential to be impacted. But I feel that it's limited in what's depicted here because it's multiple residential structures have the, have the potential to be impacted here. Because a car turns left or right and shines the light in either direction. So those were my comments about the headlights study, I appreciate it, that the effort was, was taken. But I thought we had a long way to go to seeing it as a document that gave a concrete answer to whether the neighboring structures would be impacted by headlights.
Kate, this is Matt Long again from Long, so it's, oh, sorry, do I have permission to speak?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Okay, thank you, sorry. I just, I just want to make sure that I understand what you're saying because you were flashing diagrams in front of the camera and I didn't really catch everything you were saying on that. So you want to see as the car comes out, it comes out of the curb cut, at the runoff area bumps back up, and then as it turns? I'm getting a lot of feedback, can someone, can everybody mute, please? Okay, as it turns, it sees what houses that also hit in the arc of the turning car?
To represent the car actually moving from your proposed driveline of the driveway onto Evans in the north and south directions.
Okay, you got it.
Whoever is 716-510-4338, please mute your phone.
I think that's Sean. I, I agree, Kate, and I think that's something we could also look at if we need over there to look at it. When Sean put up the picture that he took of 98 Evans, I mean, obviously 98 Evans is going to be impacted because they no longer have a tree in front of them. The house that was to the south of that looked extremely filled with by landscape. So my thought is if they're pulling out of the development and making a left-hand turn, that house may not be impacted very much. But I could not see what the situation for the house the north of 98 is. And I think that that's something we should look at. I know Sean has offered to talk to those homeowners about possibly putting in landscaping to buffer it, and I think that that's a great solution. You know, if you look at.
I think we should be careful about saying that, um, that old growth trees will protect a homeowner from headlights because I've had several old growth trees on my property need to be taken down because trees only have a certain lifespan, unfortunately, certain varieties. So, you know, to, to say that, you know, and it's not even an old growth tree, I'm looking at it right now. I wish I could show you the, the Google image here. It is some vegetation and it is overgrown. So if someone maintained that, um, at a, um, more manicured, um, landscape, landscaping, you know, that would not prevent headlights from moving, what, from changing in the first story and possibly the second story windows.
No, I'm not saying it will completely prevent it, I'm saying, I think, like, in the situation that there, that it currently exists at, it certainly would help to buffer it, right? And Sean has said he would talk to the people at 98 Evans to also work on possibly some landscaping to buffer it. Not to totally prevent it, but at least to tone it down if need be.
And that's the will of the owners on Evans. I'm not going to tell anybody you need to put some landscaping.
No.
From this development, I mean, that's, that's not the goal here, you know? To do with what they're going to do with their own properties as far as landscaping goes as well.
No, but this, but this is Sean, in the absence of that, what else could we do? I mean, this is not uncommon that you have a driveway onto a street where there's homes on that.
You've said that twice now, so I'm trying to think of developments or something with this magnitude of cars that is not on Main Street in the village. So we've got in a tally, which we painstakingly located the driveways across from one another so their development only impacted each other and then it didn't, it didn't impact the townhouses occupants. And I'm, I'm struggling about where's some of the other ones. So maybe you could point those out for me so I can visualize that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to come up with a specific instance right here, and I'm not saying just because there is an instance that deals with it, but I guess all I'm saying is, what else could we do but propose landscaping on the opposite side?
It's called.
I mean, other than that, we could start to play around with the location. Okay.
Anyone have anything else?
Mr. Stone, this is, uh, this is Matt Long again, just, I'll stop talking after this. What would the board find beneficial for me to bring to the site? Obviously, the site plan, would it help to show a couple different options of revised colored elevations with a couple different grade options with what we can sort of maybe massage within the framework of our site to help to mitigate some of your concerns? And then maybe, oh, a measuring tape? And we can, I don't know, I, does anyone have survey equipment? I don't know, like what, I'm trying to think what else would help you guys sort of understand. I mean, we could, maybe we can mark out like we did before. I mean, we could, maybe we can mark out like we did before. Um, I think we did that in the past where we stick the front of the building. I think we minimally should have that, I would think, right? Where you'd have an idea of where they're gonna go.
I mean, if you had a 36-foot stick to put up in the air so we know how high this building's gonna be, or a balloon on a string or something, so we have an idea of where that building's gonna be.
We've done that before, Matt, that's how, that's what we do here.
Yeah, you know, or
Really?
Or, or, or telephone call and
I like, I like balloons, okay. Balloon on string.
Balloon on string, and hopefully it's not a windy day.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, welcome. Anything else? I know in our pre-meeting, we talked about having Elizabeth Holmes talk for five minutes. I see she's here, if she'd like to, I'll give you five minutes to talk about the highlights of your letter you submitted today.
I am still here, thank you, Chairman.
So, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, good evening Chairperson Stone and fellow board members. My name is Elizabeth Holmes. I belong to the firm of Rupp, Bass, Falls, Graff and Cunningham, and I, along with Mark Romanowski, my partner, represent a number of village residents opposed to this project. My clients represent a substantial portion of the surrounding community, including of the seven residential property owners located in the Evans Street neighborhood mixed-use zone. I want the board for this opportunity, on behalf of my clients, particularly in light of the fact that we provided you with substantial information today that I'm sure you have not had adequate time to digest before the meeting, or listening to this discussion tonight, I'm encouraged that the board shares a number of concerns of my clients, which are highlighted in our submission, and in fact focused on the board's obligations in connection with the plan and architectural review. I will be brief in my comments, but I do want to touch on the seeker component of our submission, environmental and site plan issues very much overlap, and more importantly, because this board as lead agency in connection with seeker is obligated to revisit a determination of significant, discovered any time prior to its decision to undertake, fund or approve an action. I understand the board is not moving forward with a vote tonight, so I think this point is significant. My position and, and my client's position is, is that the planning board should revisit its designation of this project as an unlisted action and subsequent environmental analysis before it votes on the proposed site plan. Of the project as a type-one action is required based upon the information we have presented that this project is in fact a type-one action which requires under seeker the preparation and circulation of an environmental assessment form for your or involved agencies' review before an all determination of significant on an action. With respect to that argument, the project sponsor's interpretation that conversion of an enhanced assist living facility, sleeping and bathing quarters to a multi-family residential apartment complex does not constitute new residential construction is inaccurate under seeker. Proposed new buildings that we've discussed significantly tonight will contain at minimum 60 brand-new residential apartments. There's no unit analysis that's appropriate here under seeker, and a type-one classification is required for this project in light of its proposed development of over 50 new residential apartment units and its location substantially contiguous to a property eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places, which as you know is the property located at 75 Evans Street. Substantially contiguous is intended to cover situations where a proposed activity is not directly adjacent to a sensitive resource, but it is close enough proximity that it could potentially have an impact. 75 Evans sits 70 feet away from the project site. It's absolutely substantially contiguous to this project and this board should treat it as such and revisit its designation. With respect to the board's site plan review, our concerns focus primarily on the project's density and scale and the demonstrated impact that it will have on the character of the surrounding community at length tonight. And as the board knows, it's tasked with the consideration of certain criteria in connection with its site plan and architectural review and approval. Mr. Hopkins touched on the basics, traffic, snow removal, landscaping, lighting, but there are larger and equally important considerations here, and those are specifically the board's obligations to prevent signs and appearances that are out of character with the valued historic building forms within the village. An example, this is 75 Evans Street, historical home built in the 1800s located just 70 feet from the project, and to ensure that new construction will not be visually offensive or inappropriate by reason of striking visual discord in relation to the site or its surroundings. The use, enjoyment and desirability of the properties in the area and will not be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. These are the most concerns of this board, and this project as proposed tonight will result in an immeasurable and irreversible adverse impact on the character of this residential village neighborhood through the construction of over 60,000 square feet of new buildings, resulting in 1,000 square feet of residential apartments, the addition of four multi-story, multi-unit apartment buildings with proposed new buildings reaching a height of 36 feet, I don't have to tell you, a mass of 156 feet wide and 65 feet deep, and it instances a minimum of 15 feet from Evans. I think Mr. Hopkins' slides tonight demonstrate that the proposed buildings span the length of almost four residential lots across the street on Evans. Imagine sitting across the street from a building that spans the length of four of your homes and lots. Very, very perceptible adverse impact. Significant reduction in green space with the replacement of vast lush green landscaping and a multitude of mature trees with a sea of top. Two, 39 shrubs do not make up for the 100 to 200-year-old trees, which now provide various environmental benefits that are currently located on the project site and will be removed as a result of development. Clients situated across from the project on Evans Street will bear the brunt of this impact, and I, I think that the board understands that, based on their conversation and discussion tonight, we submit passing figures and comparisons to demonstrate that impact and specifically that this project does not comply with the NMU's objective design standards that require developments to complement the village traditional architecture through appropriate building proportion, massing and scale, and gradual transitions from existing lower-density housing to higher-density housing. This board has already concluded that the project conflicts with that objection, with that objection in connection with this environmental review. Contrary to Mr. Hopkins' assertion that this is a mixed-use area, it is not a mixed-use area. The project site is within a mixed-use district, but it's directly facing a very low-density single-family home residential development. Hopkins objected to the massing study that we submitted, and after hearing the substantial concern regarding the issue, my suggestion on behalf of my clients would be to request that the project sponsor submit a massing study rather than the site, clear up the confusion with respect to the contrast between the three-story 36-foot buildings and the modest single-family homes across the street through a massing study. If he thinks that our studies are inaccurate, then let's see what he can provide to support his position that this development is in accordance with the objectives of the NMU districts. Project's mass scale and density is far from gradual when reviewed in the context of these surroundings, not, not the higher-density developments in the area, but the modest single-family homes situated across from these building additions that will be impacted the most. I understand that the board is not moving to an approval tonight, but based on our client's review of all of the objective criteria, approving it as proposed will fly in the face of the planning criteria and objectives of this board's code and community plan that seeks to preserve, protect the sensitive fabric of the historic village. These are the standing homes and residents that we are asking you to protect. Mission also raises concerns with respect to the lack of evaluation of potential impacts on existing drainage problems facing the Rosewood Townhouses. They are also clients. Um, I understand that based on our submission, the planning board would like to look into that further. I'm happy to hear that. This is based on the Environmental Advisory Committee's suggestion that an investigation has not yet been done. In conclusion, I would note that the sponsor is repeatedly focused, focused on how lengthy this process and the planning board review has been. I'd like to emphasize that the length of time spent on this project does not matter if it's not done right. The progress tonight by this board leads me to believe that it has that interest at heart as well as the village residents. Clients, I appreciate the board hearing our concerns tonight on behalf of the community. The consideration in connection with this review, if the board has questions of me or my clients, I'm happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions?
Wes, just before, certainly if you, board wants to ask any questions, but a lot of this was focused on issues that are raised in litigation that has been filed against the village, uh, and that we are presumably going to be defending at some point, so I don't want to engage on those issues, these legal arguments that have been raised, that's not, um, this isn't the appropriate forum to do that. So, uh, given that those issues are now in active litigation, but if you have any other questions for the, the attorney, that's fine.
Okay. No one has anything else? Thank you, Ms. Holmes, we appreciate your attending tonight's meeting.
Thanks for your time.
Anyone have anything else?
I would just say, so
Are we, are we still talking about this proj, project or are we moving on to other items, Wes?
No, we're just talking about this project tonight.
Okay, thanks.
So, then just to reiterate then on this little field trip idea, so as soon as, let, I, I just want to make sure that we're, we, we are able to leave enough time to publicize that, um, once we get a schedule too, so.
Okay.
It will technically be a, a meeting if you're all gonna be there discussing the project.
Or a quorum if you are. Okay, do we need to take minutes at that meeting then?
Good question, um.
Kind of record should be made?
Yeah, some, some sort of record should be made.
It's a meeting, we take, we take rec, we take notes.
Why don't I send the email out and see what the date's gonna be and who can attend, and then Chip, maybe we can get with you, you and just see, you know, the details from there. I would say, you know, if we have a couple days, we can definitely post it on the website and announce it via the email chain, um, and then kind of go from there, but maybe we should just see who's gonna attend first.
Okay. Sounds good. I, I have one question for Mr. O'Neill about what I understand, whether this project is approved or denied, the Bloker Homes closing anyway. Is there a date for it to close? And I don't know if you can answer that or not, but or if Sean's still there, if he can help with that? Anyone there from Bloker Home?
Sean's on mute right now. Maybe he's, maybe he's talking to his client, asking him that question, I don't know.
Can everyone hear me? I'm sorry, I muted myself by accident. Does anyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that, Chairman Stone. Uh, I don't want to speak for Mr. O'Neill, I don't know if he's on the call, but we can certainly respond to that righty.
Okay, it just, I, it just feels like the village planning board is getting blamed for closing Bloker Home.
No, that, that's certainly not, you know, that's certainly not our
Kind of not the case, but that's not what you hear around the neighborhood, so.
Okay.
Because I asked to the same effect, Mr. Stone, um, can we, maybe Mr. Hopkins could comment or comment in running after the fact, um, has, um, Bloker Home received their state approval transition plan before closing?
Okay, if, yeah, Sean could look into that, that would be good. I know this has nothing to do with our approval or denial, but it would be nice to know for the, for the public to know what the timing is on this.
Wes, you brought up something at the beginning of the meeting about the Drexel Home Apartments.
Yes.
How can we find out what's going on with that?
I don't, I
I've spoken with the owners. I mean, again, this is worth nothing because plans can change at any moment, but apparently they're just gonna do some interior renovations and the project's gonna stay as is. I mean, that's never a guarantee, but that's what we've been told of the building apartments, so.
Okay.
Take that for what it's worth.
I, I just brought it up because I know
However, I, I, again, just so the, you know, the board could be aware, i- if they're doing anything other than just interior renovations, that property is significantly prior non-conforming. I mean, it does not conform to the NMU design standards. So, if they were doing, uh, depending on the level of exterior, if they were to do some exterior work there, essentially, they would have to bring that entire site into compliance, which was all these design standards that we've been talking about here, a minimum of two stories, much closer to the street. Because that's what the design standards provide for.
Yeah, and they're aware, we, me and Tony did have that discussion with them when we did the sewer compliance inspections for the sales, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that discussion has been had.
Okay.
I asked, does the village board know what's going on? And is there a plan to have some kind of public input as to whether the NMU district is still something that, along Evans, that is still something that this community wants?
I, that, I, I don't know whether that's the, the village board, I think, is generally aware of what's going on, but I would say if this board doesn't feel that the NMU design standards are accomplishing what the comp plan envisioned and what, and, you know, I feel compelled to point out that that's comp plan amendments and the NMU design standards were reviewed by the planning board prior to being adopted by the village board in 2015, but if you feel that that is, it's not working out the way you want, certainly would be an appropriate thing for the planning board to make a recommendation to the village board. That's frankly part of what, uh, the planning board's charge is, to make those sorts of recommendations, but what I will
I'm not willing to smearhead that, but
Oh, I, and that's, and that's fine, I'm just saying that that would be
I think they need to listen to the community, and they've apparently had petitions brought, I don't know where these petitions went, I don't know if they only went to the local board. I did miss a couple meetings in the winter, but, um, you know, it doesn't seem like the community in general is supportive of this NMU district. So, it's put, it's put the planning board in, in a, in a, in a very poor position.
Well, you know, again, I, the planning board, first of all, I think you need to be somewhat careful about drawing conclusions about what the public does and does not support based on petitions, uh, that have been filed, depending on, there's, there's over 5,000 people who live in the village. So, you know, the
Do you recommend that the village board have a public meeting and invite everyone to talk about this issue? I mean, you're absolutely right.
Can, can, can do that, and, but what I, what I was going to say is if the villa, I mean, this did come up at the last village board meeting about the, the question of whether the village wants to look at these, they would frankly need to hire a consultant, so it's something they would need to have to budget for.
Anyone have anything else tonight?
Well, I do have a question about other business. So, we've had some vacancies along Main Street, um, and in particular, I think Monroe Muffler might be a vacancy, although it's hard to tell.
It is.
They moved.
Okay, so we've got this pole sign out there, how long does that pole sign get to stay to be grandfathered into? Well, now it's just allowed, but obviously there's some maintenance issues with it.
It was
No, it needs to come down.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
It's overdue, it's overdue.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it was in use, it was allowed to stay from my understanding, but the same thing, that's partially my fault too. I mean, theirs is fairly new, but the Sweet Jenny's pole sign also is supposed to be coming down, I just haven't sent them the notice yet.
What happened next door to the, the parking lot, so we have the building in the back that never came to us for architectural review.
Yeah.
We've got the old num, house by numbers building that now has, um, signs up in, um, in the, all the entire storefront window system, and then we saw a parking lot completely get redone and actually striped without putting to us for site plan review. And the building, with the covered driveway, now has vinyl siding on it, which isn't allowed in the village. So, like, a lot of things are going around right there.
So, like, a lot of things are going around right there.
Yeah, the problem is, we ran into this with Talbot's. The, the way that the code's written with the 25% was unclear because they basically just top quoted it. It's not a full, it's not 100% we do. So, when Talbot's did the same thing, we did the same line of thinking. However, they're in trouble for doing the paving because they didn't get the proper permitting for that. So, that's what I'm working on now.
They have a striping plan before?
They're supposed to submit that and let me know they're doing it. They did it without one. So, they're in trouble with me for that right now. The building in the back, I don't know if you were at the meeting when I discussed it with Wes and the rest of the board members, but that was issued a permit by the previous building inspector. Right or wrong, let's not point fingers. But they were issued the permit and a certificate of compliance for the building renovation on the front. So, it was decided at the time that there's probably not much we can do about it. Yeah, I mean, take that for what it's worth.
And then did you see the new vinyl siding that went up right before COVID?
I did not see that one. Is that the building with the drive-through right next to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Just under the overpass?
Yes.
Okay. So, if it's 200 square feet, I mean, it wouldn't need to come to you, but it depends on the size.
They're not allowed to use vinyl foam.
Is it? Okay. I'll look into that.
Hey, Tim, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Tim, how soon will we get an announcement by the village engineer on the study about the drainage there? Will that come relatively soon or not?
For which one?
On the Bloker Homes.
Bloker Homes? Oh.
Tim, that Bruce Benson letter we were-
Yeah, that. Yeah, I have, if I submit it to him tomorrow, you know, he's normally pretty good about getting back to me. Obviously, COVID delays things a little bit. So, hopefully by the end of the week I could hear. But I'll have to talk to the engineer and see what his timeframe is.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it. That's it for me.
Anyone have anything else? Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, for appearing tonight.
Everybody stay safe.
Stay safe and we'll see you on a site everyone coming up shortly. Night, all.
Good night.